Good evening Yorktown and welcome to the Town Board Work Session Meeting on September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. If everyone can please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if we could please just have a moment of silence as we remember the lives lost on nine eleven, two thousand and one. Let's please keep our first responders in our thoughts and prayers this evening and of course, the bravest men and women. The world has known the United States soldiers serving overseas. Thank you. Okay, we'll do introductions quickly. Trying to getting back used to Zoom here, Matt Slater, Town Supervisor, just gonna go around in the squares that I see, joined by Councilwoman Alice Roker, Councilman Ed Lachterman, Councilman Vishnu Patel. We have Councilman Tom Diana, our Town Clerk Diana Quas, and our Town Attorney Adam Rodriguez. Just very briefly before we begin, just a couple of, a couple of announcements, we do have flu shots. September sixteenth at the Albert A. Capellini and Community Cultural Center. You can sign up for them right online and you can reserve your spot for a free flu shot. Again, thank you to our friends at Save More Pharmacy for partnering with us. We are working with Save More Pharmacy, we'll be doing another one with Teconic Pharmacy. And then, of course, as the COVID nineteen booster shots become available, we'll be working with them to provide those as well to residents of our community. As a reminder, school tax payments are due September thirtieth. There are a multitude of ways of paying your school taxes, you can do so online, you can mail it in, you can drop it off right outside of Town Hall here in the Dropbox, or you can come right into Town, to Town Hall and say hello to our terrific staff in the Tax Receiver's Office and pay them directly. As a reminder, after September thirtieth, there is late fees that get assessed to your bills if you are late. It was a great weekend in Yorktown, I want to really thank the organizers of the Grange Fair. I know that Councilman Patel won another blue ribbon for one of his entries, congratulations, Councilman Patel. But the ninety-seventh Grange Fair here in the town of Yorktown, and it was a terrific turnout, thank you to everyone who helped organize it and thank you to everyone who attended. If you're, if you're still feeling for a good time this week, San Gennaro is back here in the town of Yorktown. Our session starts tomorrow night, Wednesday, excuse me, Wednesday night, and it'll be here in Yorktown Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So get ready for some sausages and peppers and zeppelins and a good old time with San, with the San Gennaro feast. Lastly, I do want to again thank everyone who either organized or attended one of our nine eleven ceremonies. We did commemorate the twentieth anniversary of the terrorist attacks that occurred on nine eleven this past Saturday. From, from the Elks to our fire, volunteer fire departments, everyone in between who put on a nine eleven ceremony or to all those who came out, to the ones that the town hosted over at Shruboke. And if you have not seen the stunning mural that was designed and painted by Christopher Rios next to the library, please, I encourage you to go spend some time up there, reflect on nine eleven, the meaning of, of nine eleven and all the lives that were lost. But Christopher Rios, just such a talented artist, painted a beautiful mural to commemorate the twentieth anniversary. And then, of course, Andrew Mosher, who is a Yorktown resident, once again putting up the lights for us. Eight o'clock at Granite Knolls on Saturday night where we had our illumination ceremony and we had the beams of light, which was again another moving, another moving experience for the residents of Yorktown. So to all those who participated and helped us and to all those who hosted a nine eleven ceremony, thank you all for remembering the importance of, of September eleventh and helping us teach it to the next generation. We do have a couple of items that we're gonna jump into tonight as part of our work session agenda. We're gonna start with Sustainable Westchester and we'll welcome Claire to discuss some of the program updates and new programs that we're gonna be partnering with our friends at Sustainable Westchester for or with. There's Claire, hey Claire.
Hi, how are you all?
Good, how are you?
Great, how are you?
I'm good, I'm so glad to be with you all tonight.
Wish you were here in person.
I know, someday soon, I'm sure. All right, so I, I was just unmuting myself and getting the video going when I, I saw I was let in. Did you already say a few words or am I good to go?
You're good to go, it was a brief introduction. And so the floor is yours to update the town on some of the great programs that we're launching.
Great, all right, so let me share my screen and we will get started. All right, so I am Clerico Casca, I manage these, I'm a manager of the solar programs here at Sustainable Westchester and I'm really excited to talk to you all a little bit about Community Solar and Grid Rewards, which we currently have campaigns for in the town, thanks to some help from Kira Brunner and
Recording in progress.
Supervisor Matt Slater and many of you that I'm sure will assist with this too. You all are well aware, especially with the last couple of weeks with Hurricane Henri and Hurricane Ida, and not just in Yorktown, but also in the south of Westchester County, how devastating the weather events have been that we've been having recently. It's just been increasing flooding over the years, increasing heat over the years, and we can all really feel climate change in real time, which is why local action is so important. And New York State is one of the most aggressive climate, has some of the most aggressive climate goals in the country. Seventy percent renewable energy by twenty thirty is the projected goal. We're only at twenty-eight percent, which means we have about forty percent to make up for in the coming nine years, which is a tall order to be sure, as well as zero emissions by twenty forty. But going back to previous slide, that's only possible with local action. And that brings us to Sustainable Westchester because our goal is all about facilitating local action and working with our incredible municipal participants, including Yorktown, all of you. You've been an incredible partner in the past and I'm really excited that we're working together on these two campaigns. Which brings us to my brief explanation of the Clean Energy Community Campaigns. The Clean Energy Community Program is presented through NYSERDA, the state's energy regulating body, and they have, they've issued the CEC program, Clean Energy Communities, that allows municipalities in Westchester, but also throughout the state to conduct specific types of green energy and green energy related program campaigns for grant funding. So if Yorktown completes the two campaigns that we have set out to do and have already put into motion, i.e. Community Solar and Grid Rewards, you'll earn a grant of five thousand dollars each for the town to use in green initiatives, which will go a long way towards furthering Yorktown's already incredible green, green initiatives. And the nice thing is you can use this grant funding in sort of a flexible way as long as NYSERDA approves it. So the, the options are open and each program, I'll get into the specifics about Community Solar and Grid Rewards in just a moment, but these two campaigns that we have going simultaneously, they only need ten Yorktown residents or eligible organizations or houses of worship to sign up for each one of those programs to earn the grant funding for each. So Community Solar, that campaign can, can bring in a grant of five thousand dollars and Grid Rewards, once completed, can bring in a grant of five thousand dollars. And we had our first Community Solar enrollment for this campaign last week, so we really only got nine more to go, although Yorktown in the last Community Solar campaign we did led to more than three hundred enrollments total, so I know we'll, we'll reach that easily. I have to just be totally transparent and say that Yorktown has the highest number of Community Solar enrollments in the county through our program, yeah, I know, good job, Yorktown. So for those of you that aren't quite familiar with Community Solar or could use a refresher, it is a fantastic and flexible way that just about anyone can benefit from solar energy and solar power without installing anything directly on their home or property. So how it starts is we partner with one of our excellent solar developers who builds a solar farm and it's usually on a large rooftop that's not being used for anything else. And the solar farm, once it's generating power, that gets sent to the local power grid to make the electricity that the community uses greener and it can provide that community with, with solar energy or more solar energy than there was previously. And for everyone that signs up for the Community Solar Program, they are a member of that specific solar farm and for that, they receive discounts off of their electricity bills each month, which is fantastic and it provides a savings of up to ten percent off of, off of the participants' electric bills every month after their solar farm starts generating power, which is usually just a couple of months after they start, after they sign up to the program. There's no roof needed, there's no wires that are installed at the person's property. Renters and homeowners are welcome to sign up as well as, well, Yorktown itself has signed up its own meters, electric meters, houses of worship are eligible too, so it's really very open who can participate. And it's also free to join our council and compatible with any electricity supplier. So if a Yorktown resident has NYSAG, great, they can sign up. If they have ConEd, they can sign up, although there's a little bit more of a limitation, a little bit less capacity in, in ConEd territory, so they might just have to wait a couple of weeks before that we can match them with a solar farm, but they're also welcome to sign up. And if they have an energy supply company, they can join as well, just in addition to their electric supplier, whoever that might be. And it goes a long way towards supporting local renewable energy. And it makes a massive difference. New York State has just last year surpassed California and all other states in being the best state in the country for Community Solar and that is a big deal because Community Solar throughout the country is the best way to expand solar energy, period. It, it really is, it's so much more efficient than depending on residents or individual businesses to install these, these panels on their own property because it, it takes a lot of work and logistically it's difficult. It's a little bit more expensive and anyway, Community Solar is a very easy, flexible way to make a massive collective difference. So that is the Community Solar Program that we are asking Yorktown residents to sign up to through this CEC campaign. So again, we only need nine more people to sign up to the program before we can apply for that grant funding, although we hope we get a lot more because it, it is very impactful. The second program that we're having Yorktown residents sign up for, for the other CEC campaign type is Grid Rewards. And Grid Rewards is very straightforward, I will say it's only for ConEd customers. So if someone is a NYSAG customer, we can't enroll them in Grid Rewards, ConEd only. But if someone in Yorktown has ConEd and that can be a resident, that can be any other electric account holder of ConEd, it's free to download the app, the Grid Rewards app from our website and I will show that on the screen in just a minute or two. And then, once the app is downloaded, you connect your ConEd account to the app and then it gives you a very easy tool to track your electric, electricity habits and patterns over time. One, one story that's kind of fun is one of our colleagues downloaded Grid Rewards and realized that she was keeping her electric oven on for way longer than was necessary and just by adjusting that each night, she was cooking dinner led to a pretty, pretty good sizable electric savings at the end of each month. So even things like that, it could potentially save money, but more importantly, it's just a good educational tool for us to learn more about how we use our own electricity. And Grid Rewards also in, in helping us learn about our own electricity, it lets us support grid efficiency, which just means that in time, the more that each one of us learns about our electric use patterns, we'll be able to tell, or we'll be able to get notifications when people are starting to use a lot of electricity, not just us, but our neighbors and our whole community. And when the electric grid has lots and lots of people using electricity all at once, it strains the grid and means that different utilities have to turn on these very expensive, very high polluting peaker plants to make up for the needed electricity. And so Grid Rewards can, can notify you when there are those times of peak electricity usage, what we call it, and we can all collectively lower our electricity use when that happens. And then for people signing up for this Grid Rewards app and program, the next summer season, so in two thousand and twenty-two, they are locked in to, to get notifications that say, you, congratulations, you can turn off your electricity or, or lower your electric use during these couple of hours during the next day or two. And at the end of the summer, they can earn a cash reward. The average person after a summer season can earn about two hundred dollars in rewards if they participate. So it's, it's a great tool to learn more about your own electric use and also potentially get some savings in two ways. So a brief recap.
It's kind of like a, like a smart meter, so this way you can see, right?
Mm-hmm, exactly, and it really is only, the reason why it's not available to NYSAG customers is because NYSAG has not made smart meters ubiquitous the way that ConEd has. ConEd has sort of mandated that everyone has to have smart meters, all except the very rarest of exceptions, which makes this kind of tool possible. So exactly, mm-hmm. All right, so a brief recap. The grant opportunity for the CEC program is very exciting. Yorktown can earn two grants totaling ten thousand dollars together, five thousand dollars for each campaign that we complete. And for Community Solar, we only need ten, ten signups from the town of Yorktown between NYSAG and ConEd customers. And for Grid Rewards, again, we only need ten people from the town to sign up and it's only available to those in ConEd, the ConEd area. But it should be pretty simple to do, most people that sign up to Grid Rewards can do it in fifteen minutes, ten or fifteen minutes, which is the same story for Community Solar, they're both very easy to sign up to online. For Community Solar, someone would just go to sustainablewestchester.org/solar for Grid Rewards. It's sustainablewestchester.org/GridRewards, try and make that easy. It gives the step-by-step of how to sign up and then we're always available with, to answer questions on the program and how to sign up and, and just let people know how it all works, so.
I know that we put an email blast out earlier today, so if people do get our town emails, please check your inboxes. I think there's a, it's great information about the two programs and links are directly built into the emails that you can sign up directly. Folks have questions, you can contact Sustainable Westchester directly or you can contact Town Hall and you can talk to Kira Brunner in the Supervisor's Office, who's been a great asset for us as well in, in coordinating these efforts.
Yes, she, she really has, she's been a superstar helping with this, this community outreach about these two programs. And I just want to say that as of today, Kira and Supervisor Slater have said that we will do an event at some point on Wednesday evening, probably six o'clock, excuse me, Wednesday, September twenty-ninth. So in a couple of weeks from now, we'll host a community event to let folks attending know about Community Solar and Grid Rewards.
We've done those, we've done those in the past.
Yes, we have, and there'll be more information coming, but there will be an event. If you have any questions personally that you'd like to reach out to me about, my email is clara@sustainablewestchester.org. And I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions now though, but my email's there in case you think of some later on.
So from, from this, from the Town Board standpoint, I mean, this is another great way of interacting with our community and encouraging our community to, to explore Community Solar and the Grid Rewards. And in turn, for those who sign up, you're gonna help the town hopefully obtain two grants of five thousand dollars, which we're gonna be able to put towards more green initiatives. I see that we've got Sarah Wilson from our CSC Task Force on who's joined us and the CSC's been great leaders in the, in the community locally, putting together things like EV car shows and, and educating folks on, on so many different initiatives. I know Councilman Patel, you've got your hand up, you'd like to ask a question.
Okay, you know, there are just a mix misinformation of the people's knowledge of, it's like an older home, you know, you have to have a certain age roof, otherwise, you know, you don't get it. And then, you know, there are three percent in the age of people, they move. Is there any disadvantage of installing now or wait, you know? So this kind of problem, see if you can make a comment on this one.
Yes, of course, so Community Solar, you don't install anything on your roof, you don't install anything on your property. There's no wire sent to your property at all, which is nice because that's what distinguishes it from what is, what we traditionally think of as solar power and the only way to participate in solar power. With Community Solar, let's say I'm signing up for Community Solar and I'm a Yorktown resident. I will go onto my computer, I will complete the signup steps, I'll put in some information about myself and my, my address and my ConEd bill or my ConEd account number and I'll be matched with a solar farm and it will be one hundred percent done virtually. No one will come to my home or apartment, so, and, so I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I mean, it's great for, you know, I talked to, I talked to like some residents who, I've got solar panels on my house, I know Councilman Lachterman has solar panels on his house, but if you don't want that type of equipment to be installed or your, your house may not be in the right position, or may, you know, be as, as Councilman Patel said, too old, there's still opportunities through Community Solar to, to benefit, Councilman, Councilwoman Roker.
Yeah, and, and I'm one of those people that really don't know a lot about solar energy, although I did call NYSAG, I am a member, I am a client of NYSAG and I did sign up for the program and it's amazing because you get your Con, you get your NYSAG bill and then you also receive what, what, how much money you've saved from by using the Community Solar Program. There are no drawbacks, none whatsoever. The only thing you have when you, before you sit down, you go onto the computer, get your NYSAG bill because you're gonna need a number from that bill to plug in, but it, it was simple and I get a discount.
Yeah, thank you so much for your feedback on that, I'm really glad that you're a part of Community Solar too. And I will also say that in all of the materials that I'm, I'm working on with Kira from the town, we're, we're letting people know what they would need to sign up, how to sign up, where they would go to sign up, my contact information or hers if they have more questions. And just to go, go back to Congress, excuse me, Councilmember Patel's point about moving with Community Solar, it, it is very flexible, so we have people that sign up and they're only in it for nine months and then they move and that is just fine. We just ask for about sixty days notice before you cancel, if you can, because that's how long it takes the utility to process that. But it's, it's very flexible, easy to join, easy to cancel, all around easy and, and it is guaranteed to save you money and that's not just from us, it's also from New York State's regulations.
Awesome, I'm gonna just see quickly Sarah Wilson from the CSC, anything you want to add?
No, I'm just here in support of our great partnership with Sustainable Westchester, thanks.
Yeah, and we're so grateful to all of you, I just have to underscore that from myself and from our Executive Director Nina Orville and our Solar Programs Director Leo Liegman, who I know many of you have, are familiar with and have worked with, so thank you.
All right, Claire, thanks so much. For residents of Yorktown, again, visit Sustainable Westchester, you can also visit the town's website or if you do receive our email blast, check your inbox and all the information on these two new programs are right at your fingertips. Claire, thanks so much for joining us, looking forward to our event on the twenty-ninth.
Absolutely, thank you everyone, have a great night.
Have a good one, thanks Claire. Okay, next we're gonna bring in Mary Rose Gummerson to discuss the Yorktown Boy Scout Troop. I think it's Troop, is it Troop one sixty-five, Mary Rose? I don't think that's right. Mary Rose, can you hear us? Just unmute yourself if you could on the bottom there. Everyone's getting back to, used to being back in Zoom land, there we go.
Hello.
Perfect. Good to see you, so, Mary Rose, remind me, what's this, what's this troop number again?
Troop one sixty-five.
Oh, it is one sixty-five.
Yes, Yorktown Troop one sixty-five.
Great, perfect, so Mary Rose, why don't you, I know that you reached out to me and, and why don't you explain to the Town Board the situation with Troop one sixty-five and, and our efforts to make sure that one sixty-five remains in the town of Yorktown.
Okay, so hello everyone, my name is Mary Rose Gummerson, I'm the Committee Chair from Troop one sixty-five Yorktown and we've been a troop in Yorktown for sixty-five years. We were chartered by the First Presbyterian Church, Yorktown First Presbyterian Church for that time. And over the course of the last few years, the church has been sort of distancing themselves from the troop and the pack. And as of this year, they notified us that they would not be resigning our charter and so we would have to seek a charter elsewhere or the troop will dissolve. So I spoke to Matt, Mr. Slater at one of our Eagle ceremonies.
At FDR, yeah.
Right, FDR, and because we have been for the last year since, right before COVID and through COVID, we were on Zoom, but right before COVID and currently, we are meeting outside in the parks because we have not been availed a room at the church for a while, so we've been homeless for two years. Although they are still our charter, we've been kind of seeking alternate places to meet. The PAC has been meeting at Mohansick, so they're in a more, a different situation, although they are also chartered through the church. The church never actually had them meeting there, so they've always been kind of in a different place, although still chartered through the church. So right now, we're hoping that we would like to stay in Yorktown because we are Troop one sixty-five Yorktown and we've been one of the largest troops in Yorktown for sixty-five years. Our first Eagle was in nineteen sixty-two and we just had another Eagle last week, it was our ninety-third Eagle. So.
Flat Eagle.
Yeah, we're, we're nonpartisan, non-denominational, all-denominational, I should say, all-inclusive. Currently a troop of about thirty scouts and a pack of thirty-five cubs, so that's sixty-five boys. We are open for, ready for a girls' troop when they would like to join us. So we're looking for a home, we're very civic-minded, we do at least one community service project a month. Sometimes it's organized with a town like Battle of Yorktown or the troop was there placing the flags for nine eleven. Or sometimes it's just independent, like the troop has cooked Christmas dinner for Jan Peckham and different events. So we're kind of hoping that the town So we're kind of hoping that the town would say, you know what, hey, we'll be your charter. Because we are Troop 165 Yorktown, so there wouldn't be a lot of change. We were just, we're really just asking for a home, someplace to meet. And someplace where that's stable, so we don't have to worry about every year is.
I think she froze.
Yeah.
Councilman Patel.
Sorry.
Oh, there you go, you're back. You froze on us there for a second. I was just going to go over to Councilman Patel, because I know his son is a who I grew up with is an Eagle Scout. What what troop was was a meet from?
165, the best.
Was 165, that's what I thought. Him and Chris Modi, right? Yeah.
I have attended every eagle ceremony since maybe, I don't know, at least 30 some years, you know?
Yep. Councilman Lachman, you want to say something?
I think Rob Del Balzo also was an eagle out of there, believe it or not.
Really? I didn't know that about Rob. Learn something new every day about Rob.
That's tough to believe with Rob.
So as yeah, as our as as our charter, so our town attorney had a couple of questions for you, Mary Rose, Mr. Rodriguez?
Hi, hi, Ms. Gummerson. Could you tell me, is there a reason that the church wouldn't re-sign the charter in any specific?
Um, there's a couple of reasons. Their biggest reason was that the Presbyterian Church.
Freeze up again.
Yeah, I think I think I think so. Mary Rose, you still there? Councilwoman Roker, do you recall the town ever being a charter for a troop before?
No. I'm not, I'm not sure that it's permissible. I'd like to. I mean, I can work with her offline if the board wants to vet it, but my my understanding, sort of as I sit here, is that it requires a nonprofit to be the chartering organization, but I can certainly look into that and report back.
Yeah, I think that'd be good. Obviously, we want them to remain in in our town, in our community. They've produced such an abundance of of Eagle Scouts. I think I think she is back. Mary Rose, can you hear us?
Yes. So they they wanted to come to the meetings and kind of promote the Presbyterian belief and incorporate the meeting. And not that I'm necessarily against prayer, but we are an all-denominational troop. And through our scout oaths and law, if you if you've heard our scout oaths and laws, scouts are reverent and and we do.
Yeah, we keep losing our.
Yeah.
So why don't we do this? Adam, why don't you work with Mrs. Ms. Gummerson offline to get some of those questions answered? Obviously, before we would sign anything, you'd have to review the charter to make sure that we would be in compliance anyway, so we should review that document as well to just to see what it what the requirements would be. Because if the town's never chartered a troop before, there's got to be a reason for that.
Yeah, and I'm not convinced it's permissible. But there may be other ways we can help.
Right, okay. All right, so so you'll work with Mary Rose offline and and then we'll circle back together to see if we come up, if see what the outcome of those conversations are.
And and Adam, something to look into, if you're saying it has to be 501(c)(3), maybe a group like the Lions, I think the Elks already sponsored one.
I don't think so.
Lions, Rotary, you know, there might be someone who does. And then maybe the town can wave fees, please of the loom.
I can find out from the Elks also if if, because I don't recall that we're sponsoring a troop there at this point.
Yeah, okay.
We, there used to be 9/11. Troop 9/11, but I haven't heard anything about them. Vishnu, where's Vishnu? Have you? They kind of disbanded or merged, didn't they?
Yes.
Yeah, so I'm not sure. So I mean, the Elks might be a valuable option for them also.
You know, I think a nonprofit would be really a great sponsor for the troop. I'm pretty sure the town is forbidden from doing that. But there must be some other private organizations here that would not mind sponsoring the troop.
Ed, is Legion non-for-profit?
Legion is that they sponsor Troop 1776 already.
Oh, they do? Okay, okay. Is the VFW sponsoring anyone?
I don't think the VFW does.
So maybe we maybe maybe we can talk to Alex over at the VFW.
Yeah.
And see if that would work. Mary, so Mary Rose, if the town's unable to do it, then at least we can reach out to some of the other civic organizations and and try to find you a home.
Okay, because part of the, we we are a large group, so we we need someplace to meet. And also it would be helpful if we had someplace to store our gear.
Right. Well, the well, the good news about the VFW is they do have a pretty sizable hall that you could potentially meet in. As for storage, I'm not, I'm not sure, but but we can, we can definitely help explore that. So why don't we have you speak with our town attorney offline? And then we can go from there. But between myself and the other board members, I'm confident that we're going to be able to make sure that you stay in Yorktown and partner you up with the right civic organization.
Yeah, we don't want you to go.
Right, no one wants you to go.
Yeah, we don't want to go either.
We don't want you to go.
You guys are where? The Presbyterian Church at corner 202 and 132, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So and the our charter ends in December, so we're kind of
Okay.
If we, yeah, if we don't sign, we dissolve, so.
So we still have, we still have about two months to to try to put something together.
Right.
Maybe a little bit more than that. So I'm confident that we're going to be able to do something here. Again, whether it's through the town or another organization that does great work in the community. I'm very confident that Yorktown will make sure that you stay here in Yorktown.
What 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 are your meeting requirements? Once a month?
No, we meet once a week on Thursday.
Once a week on Thursdays?
Yeah, in the evening.
Okay, you might need a little storage.
Yeah. We definitely, because we have patrol boxes and tents. We can, we can put up a shed, the boys can build a shed if there's space for it and it's okay wherever our home is, but you know, right now we have a closet. And so everybody kind of moves everything around on a regular basis. It's difficult because, you know, tents get lost and things like that. So if we had a designated space.
Yeah, right. Okay.
So Carol doesn't understand that she really can't comment during a work session. But my my wife actually had a good idea also with one of the firehouses might be interested as well.
I don't know if they're if they've done that either, but that's I, that's a good idea as well. So like I said, we'll definitely explore all the options, but I'm confident we'll come up with a good partner for you and your troop to make sure you all stay here in Yorktown and keep and keep producing those eagles.
Yes. We do a lot of service, so whoever our parents, so to speak, would be, we do dedicated service for our charter as well.
Great. Perfect. So then what we'll do is, like I said, we'll follow up with you, we'll have Adam reach out to you, and then in the meantime, the board members will reach out to some of the respective civic civic organizations that they work with. And like I said, I'm sure we're we're going to find you a home one way or the other.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
You're welcome, Mary Rose. Thank you.
And and Adam is going to contact me, does he?
Yeah, yeah, Jen, we'll give him your information. That's no problem.
All right, very good. All right.
Thanks, Mary Rose. Best segment of the trip.
Good night.
Thanks, good night.
Good night.
Night.
Okay, next, we're going to go over to Jim Materano, Parks and Rec Superintendent.
Hi, Matt, how you doing?
There he is. Hey, Jim.
Hey, Jimmy.
Long time no see.
Yeah, I haven't seen you in a while. What do you know?
Nice to see you all again.
Yeah. So Jim, we want to have a conversation about updating some of the town code in regards to potentially allowing alcohol in specific parks for specific events. I know this is something that you raised to me as well, through your work down in Mount Pleasant, one of the municipalities to our south, and how they allowed through like a special use permit that to occur. So I wanted to bring it to the town boards. I know that Councilman Lachman also reached out to me about this. Councilman, I don't know if you want to add anything to the introduction there on the subject matter.
So I was recently at a at a party at a park down at, I want to say it's Prior Cliff, by the pool there in the gazebo. And they had a special use permit for alcohol. The party was, it was a 60th birthday party, I believe.
Okay.
The the people all had a great time when I was talking to them on why they picked that venue. They said affordability and the fact that we should have alcohol here was a big part of it. You know, it it gives an option for our our residents, and it also could be a very valuable point of income for our for our Parks Department.
Can I also ask about liability?
They they were, they had to supply a certificate of insurance for the day.
And I'll touch on some of that as well.
Okay. That liability, so the town would not incur any liability if we do this?
Yeah, I'll get going in a second, and I'll touch on some liability if you'd like.
I believe the town is named in the insurance policy, policy holder, and they're covered under the policy that that's in force.
Yep. All rentals anyway at the moment require liability insurance.
But we don't have any rentals in a park.
We do, we have rentals, but not for alcohol. So
Not for alcohol.
You're skipping ahead to my my closing points.
Well, that's my, that has been my concern forever.
Yeah, let me let me get going, and then I'll close with the answers on liability and where I stand there.
Okay, because that's my only concern.
Yep. And then I'll clean it up if I have to. Thank you. So ju- just some inconsistencies here, Matt. In our town code, when you're looking through chapter 108, section seven, it says that the town clerk can give public access, people that want to drink in public access a permit and defines parks as such. But then if you fast forward to chapter 108, section eight, amendment E, permits shall not be issued for consumption of alcoholic beverage or possession of the purpose of consumption in public parks of the town of Yorktown. So just some inconsistencies there. I definitely yield to Adam there. Maybe we could throw in the word certain parks in the town of Yorktown. And, you know, hopefully I could work with the commission in identifying a few parks that would be.
Well, I think you have to identify the specific parks that you're going to be able to do it in. I don't think
Correct, yeah.
We should be that open-ended.
Yeah, exactly.
I think the town boards should deliberate on where we think those appropriate places are. Obviously, you're not going to go to pocket parks and enjoy.
I was going to ask to, in in chapter 13, 213, in Parks and Recreation, under section five, picnics and eating, it talks about the the permit process for getting permits for, you know, a Downing Park, et cetera. So adding in that specific portion of the town code, which parks would be permitted for this type of use?
See, the better
213-5.
The better thing would have been to give us your written recommendations.
I can give you right now.
Talk about it, because to me, talking about it and reading about it, two different things.
Yep. Well, I wanted to see the appetite first, and I'm sure the commission would like to get involved in this conversation. But just off the top of my head, I think Railroad Park, Downing, as well as Sparkle, Sparkle Lake Admin Building would be appropriate.
Why do you choose them?
To me, service building, not.
The admin building, Jim.
Tell me why you chose them.
Service building ran out for, you know, first birthday parties, communions, et cetera. Little small family parties of such. I think some some light alcohol consumption at that specific spot for those specific celebrations would make sense. Downing, we do similar events, family barbecues, things of that nature.
I know the Rotary blocks your gazebo there.
Yep, Rotary as well, yep, things. Yeah, of course.
They did.
For the Pavilion at Downing. So I don't think Granada Knolls would be appropriate. Just too much traffic, too many things going on there. But Downing would be appropriate. And the Railroad Park, we're looking to do different things at that park as well. So.
Like, well, not not just that, but we even talked about doing like a something, you know, a night.
Like a, like, yep.
Theater in the park or something, right?
Okay, okay.
There, and you want to have some wine or, you know, dinner in the park if you ever, you know, were able to get that kind of idea off the ground. That's something that we kicked around too, where you get a restaurant to come in, you know, over the weekend and and you get to, you know, eat outside at Railroad Park, you'd like to have, you know, a glass of wine or a beer with your with your meal. Under the current code, you can't do that. So tho- those would allow us to be a little bit more creative with our programming and and events.
Now, that that sounds nice, but I still want to add.
Adam? I'm sorry, Councilman Lachman wanted to add something?
Well, just since Alice had to sneak in that the Rotary got bought the Pavilion. At Downing, Downing, let's remember the Lions did the gazebo at.
Okay, okay.
And speaking of liability.
I am proud that we both represent each organization, Ed.
Yes, as I am. And I think actually Councilman Patel is on the plaque, is helping to build the gazebo back then in 1994.
Okay.
And and speaking on liability insurance, I'm talking to the chairman of the commission earlier today, we thought that, you know, almost doubling the insurance, we require a million dollars worth of insurance. Maybe for these permits, you would require two million in insurance to to have this permit.
All right, Adam.
Yeah. Look, the insurance coverage is certainly a way to mitigate the risk of liability to the town, but as the property owner, our we have a significant amount of responsibility for what goes on there. And the insurance policies are only as good as the policies themselves. So a lot of times you get certificates of insured that add the town as an additional insured. You really got to go past that and see what the policies provide. So it's a way to mitigate the risk, but it's not going to eliminate the risk. We still have the ultimate responsibility as a property owner, so there's going to be some risk there.
Adam, is is a whole harmless work the paper is written on or no?
It depends who's holding you harmless. If it's somebody, if it's some LLC with no assets, not worth the paper it's written on. If it's, you know, the Amazon parent corporation, you'll be able to collect on it, right? You know, so there are a million factors that go into that.
Okay.
And even with even with insurance policies, and I've been in cases where, on behalf of municipalities, where insurance companies just didn't want to pay. And you got to take them to court. I mean, these things happen. So, you know, we do what we can to mitigate.
A couple of other things we want to do is limit the amount of time you could have an event like this, two, you know, three or four hours, things of that nature to help mitigate any.
Give me, they could start drinking before they get to the event. Give me a break.
What's wrong with that, Alice?
Am I right?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Jim, how do they handle Mount Pleasant? How do they deal with, how do they address or or deal with the with the liability issue of Mount Pleasant?
Similar as I'm suggesting, you know, acquire the liability insurance. And, you know, they they they're not like scheduled parties. They're, you know, family celebrations that, you know, are from town residents that want to celebrate with their loved ones. So it's not really what Alice is suggesting, is people pre-gaming for their family christening party.
No, I'm not suggesting that.
No, I'm just saying, the point made.
I'm trying to do my job.
Yeah, I hear you.
And what my job is, is look at what liability the town would have.
I got you.
There has to be.
I'm just curious, though, if if we know that there are other municipalities that have these types of programs in place and and allow alcohol to be permitted under certain circumstances in certain parks. I, you know, I'm hard pressed to believe that we can't figure out a way to do it as well.
I can do some diligence.
I think Adam, what Adam just spoke about, I think he basically said it depends on who the insurance is is written on. If it's written on an LLC with no money, it's not good. We should not accept it.
Well, right, and but I think, though, that in that case, obviously having the town attorney's approval included as part of the process, I mean, I think that's what we're talking about, right?
That'd be true.
Is how do you, what's the process look like? You're obviously going to have the Parks and Rec Superintendent. What's the process look like? You're obviously gonna have the Parks and Rec superintendent sign off. You're obviously gonna have uh the chief of police sign off so that the police are aware of a of a gathering or or event uh at one of these parks, right? Uh and then, of course, you're gonna have uh the town attorney take a look at the insurance policy and the liability policy to make sure that the town is properly covered. So I think uh and of course, the the clerk's role uh as well uh included. So I, you know, I think with all four, you're making sure that the town is is of course protected um and making sure that law enforcement's aware, making sure the parks department's aware. Um and again, I just I can't help but think that if other municipalities have figured out a way to do this, I'm I'm pretty confident.
I can't speak for any other municipality. My only concern is that it happens while I sit here and I've agreed to do this and something bad happens. And what that resident's gonna say to me is, why didn't you do it? Why didn't you do your due diligence?
Well, I I don't think anyone's saying we're not, any, no one's being accused of not doing their due diligence. I think it's all about getting into the details of what that approval process looks like to ensure that the due diligence uh is reviewed. It's done by the town, but it's also done by the individuals who are participating or 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 requesting to be able to serve alcohol at an event.
Correct me if I'm wrong, this town board did this at the uh YCC Theater uh not too long ago uh by allowing uh for for consumption in the town building.
Inside, it's just not outside. That's different.
Okay.
It'd be, it should be fairly doable uh for us to craft something that, you know, minimizes the risk to the town significantly. Won't eliminate all risk because that's.
You can.
That's impossible. Um but, you know, I don't see any reason why we can't do that.
And I just wanted to also bring up this code would jam us up a little bit at the golf course as well. Uh they'll be looking to get their alcohol permit at some point, and that is a town park.
But that's a state permit they would have to get because that permit would have to.
But uh once again, under our own code, they would be in violation.
Okay, so they need a double permit, you're saying?
Yeah, right. A do- a double triple permit, maybe. Diana, you had something that you wanted to say?
No, I just wanted to clarify the fact that that school or the theater itself and the school itself is not parkland, so that for it's a public place, but it's a facility.
Think it was.
In the um in the code, it specifically states not in parks. You have the the difference in the designation. I think that you can certainly draft legislation to say and and change it pretty simply to say um not in parks with the exception of the following areas and and it's probably pretty easy to do, and then you can put in your stipulations that you want.
As far as the what do you call it goes, the golf course goes, it could be in the confines of the clubhouse and alcohol will be allowed to be served and not out.
Now, that's where they.
Well, the the patio as well.
Or patio, yeah.
That's where the state permit would come in.
Yeah, exactly.
Um but Adam, so will you give them um guidance in terms of of the kind of insurance we're gonna accept and what we won't accept?
Yeah, sure. And I think one way to do this, I mean, we have to amend the code, but once we do that, we can develop a permit form for this purpose that has all these conditions attached to it. And so when someone applies, here's the, here's the form, it lays out everything we need, you know, and if there are issues, we can address them on a case by case basis, but you know, it should be pretty simple to prepare some template.
So I think just next steps then, and I'll get to Councilman Patel in a second, but next steps, Adam, you're gonna maybe work with Jim and uh and Diana to craft the amendments to the law. I thought the way that Diana uh laid it out was, made a lot of sense. Uh so you can put the uh pen to paper and uh make the amendments, bring it back to us, and then we can go from there. Councilman Patel?
Uh let me say, recently we enacted that smoking is prohibited. And now alcohol is allowed, and then maybe someday that uh one of the marijuana and all these things, so it's a smoke, it's a smoke, it kills everybody, you know? It's a pollution, you know, so how to balance the alcohol? And uh, you know, somebody wants to smoke, are you gonna monitor them? How are you gonna do it? It's a problem.
Well, I think in this, in in this case, though, it's it's not an open permit for anyone to walk up into any park and in 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 have an alcoholic beverage. This is for very specific parks, for very specific reasons that need to be approved by the town. So if they don't have the necessary permitting and approval by the town, then they would then be in violation of town law uh and town and and so.
Who is going to enforce? So that's another problem.
When enforcement ultimately comes down to the town and to the into the police department, that's why the police department needs to be involved. Because if the police department is involved in the approval process, they're aware that, you know, someone's doing in a uh some type of gathering or event that's been approved, that they approve also at uh one of the parks that we're going to permit it to uh be had. If they don't have a record of a a permit being issued, just like in most cases, um then they would have to enforce the law.
May I ask Adam a question? Or you, you may know the answer, Matthew. Is there such a thing as an open container law?
I'm gonna pass that over to Adam.
I'm not sure what you mean by that. I mean, certainly there.
I know in New York City there was, 'cause I've done shows on that. You walk outside with a can of beer in New York City, you can get hit with a fine, okay?
We do have that in New York. We, I mean, in Yorktown, um unless they change the laws, part of the town code.
Well, definitely, definitely in a car, no question about that. I don't know about um public spaces.
That's my question.
Off the top of my head, I would say by implication, if you have an open container of alcohol in a public space, it's, since it's illegal to consume, I have to, I actually have to look at the, I have to look at the exact text of the law. It might be the under that law itself because I'm not sure if there's consume or possess, so but if you have the open container, you know, it sort of implied that you've been consuming, and if you don't have a permit, you'd be in violation of that code provision.
But if the town, correct me if I'm wrong, if the town uh clerk gave them a permit to drinking the specific location outdoors, that would be permitted.
Yes, of course. Set setting aside other laws that prohibit it from being obviously in a car, right?
Yes, yes.
Of course.
But can you just check on that for me?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
No problem.
Any other thoughts on the matter?
I I do know the, I do know the commission would like to chime in on on creating uh so- some of the uh language in the uh, if we do get to this level of the of what you need to fill out, uh s- some of the rules, et cetera. Um so, you know, I'd like to bring it before the commission uh in the next meeting if that's possible.
Why don't we wait until we have language to bring forward?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, so then Adam, well, if you can work with him and and Diana um in 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 crafting the amendments, and then you can, I think maybe you bring it back to the town board, and then if the town board's comfortable, then it can go to the commission, because if the town board's not comfortable with it, no point in going to the commission anyway.
That that makes a lot of sense.
Thank you, Jimmy.
All right, thank you, Jim.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Go play some ultimate frisbee.
Be good, guys.
See you later, Jeff.
See you tomorrow.
Enjoy.
All right, next up, Mr. Rodriguez, talking more solar.
Yeah, so with the Granite Knolls Solar Project well underway, you know, we were, we obtained alienation permission from the state, they're in front of the planning board, that project's moving forward full steam ahead. Supervisor thought it would make sense to see if there are other properties around town that might benefit from, you know, a similar.
Absolutely.
Approach uh to sh- to generate revenue and, you know, increase our green bona fides, if you will. Um so, the idea is to put out an RFP with multiple town locations to sort of try to get an economies of scale proposal from a company. You know, if we put out three, four, five locations, I mean, maybe maybe only three work, maybe four work, maybe two work. Um but if you can, if you can add these locations up, you may get a premium as opposed to, you know, segregate amounts to isolated projects.
I thought that's great. I think just wonderful thing to do.
What are we talking about? Roof mount stuff?
Well, I think it's 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 roof mount, it's carports, it's battery storage. Um, you know, it's 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 different types of, uh, I mean, look, I think the idea is some some locations would only be roof mount, right? So like one of the ideas, the I think is the um sewer treatment plant.
That's where you say the hill, yeah.
Yeah, up on the hill, the sewer treatment plant, the PD, the chief said that he'd be interested in having a.
So some roofs, some roofs work, some places i- it could be a, you know, a ca- canopy system, uh maybe some parking lots. So, you know, i- it's a hybrid. I mean, but ultimately, I think you you put it out with the locations in play and you see what kind of proposals you get.
Right.
You know, um for roofs, you just have to be a little careful of that because for I think it was the YCC's roof or the libraries, when they got a new roof, the company said that it would not continue to honor the warranty. Put um something on it. So that's the only, I think, caveat that we have or some of our roofs.
Right, I, that's a good point, and we definitely wanna negotiate either a new warranty through the company that comes in to put them up, some responsibility for them to, you know, make repairs, right?
Sure, sure.
Effectively replace the warranty, but, you know, to to Tom, Tom's point earlier about whole harmlessness, that's only as good as the company you're contracting. You gotta make sure that they're you know, if there's either some bonding put up or they're going concern, but you know, these are just the work through.
That roof behind you is like a big roof.
That is now, that's a new roof. That's the Miller House in uh North Castle. For the life of me, I can't figure out how to, I could probably figure it out, but I didn't, I didn't, I didn't wanna waste any time. You'd see the town board, but uh, yeah.
You know, I I I, just to be really transparent and clear here, I absolutely hate ground array.
What?
Ground array. Can't stand it. I don't care how much screaming you put up, what are we gonna do, come to tree police? I hate it. Um all roof mount units, as far as I'm, as far as I'm concerned, are fine. Um even even the solar canopies in the right areas. Um I know we did a whole law on it. I was never really a fan of the law that we wrote. There was certain parts of it that I was and certain parts of it that I was not. Um but, you know, I don't change my stripes. If I don't like something, I don't like it.
You said exactly what you're saying now.
Yep, um, you know, so I am not for all these ground arrays. When have we become the solar capital of the northeast here in the town of York? You know, it seems like that's the way, you know, and not that I have anything against solar, I think it's a wonderful thing in the right place. To see all these, the these ground arrays, it's it's disgusting. Uh they're 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 ugly. If it's in the middle of a field, ten, ten acres back in somebody's farm field, you can't see from the road and it's never gonna be touched except for a farm field, that's a different store. But not right up next to a road, et cetera. And even with the shielding, I know we put it in there on a case by case basis, but who's gonna be to tree police? You know what I'm saying? I I I hate. What's that?
It's part of the planning board's approval to make sure that they have proper screening.
Yeah, but who's gonna be to tree police, man? Me, you?
Planning board has to include that as part of their approval. I don't think we're talking about putting ground ground mounts along Route two oh two or one eighteen or or I don't think we're talking about that. We're talking about roofs, and if there are more creative ways uh for us to explore solar on municipal land so that we can monetize some of that, uh some of those assets, then I think I think having an open mind about what potentials could be out there is worth hearing, and so.
I have no problem with that. Like I say, I just don't wanna see our town ruined with a bunch of these structures on the ground. That's and and I've been upfront and forward about that from day one. Um you know, I don't have selective memory.
I think the Hill is really one of those places, Tommy.
Even though you might think so, Matt, I don't.
I think the Hill is, the Hill is one of those places where you can do something like that because you can't see all of the plant from um the road.
You're a hundred percent right, Alice. That's that's an exact spot. Um I know Patty Peckham wanted to do something in some back forty that she had there, that was cleared at one point, where I don't believe you could see it from anywhere.
Right.
I'm not a hundred percent certain, but you know, that's that, that's that's an idyllic, an idyllic place to put. Um but anyway, that's that's.
You know, Tommy, this is a large discussion that's going on in upstate New York.
Yeah. And this is where I've seen it right on the roadway. I mean, you know, it's getting to the point where if somebody can't sell their land, ah, let's put solar up. You know, is this what we want in Yorktown?
A lot of farms.
You know, and and it's 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 um, it's a shame for the people that own the land, and they have the right to do what they want with their land. But once again, at what cost to.
But let's start looking at what we have and see what we can do, right?
Yep.
Yeah, so I think what we can do is uh we'll have Adam uh work on an RFP uh going through some of the building inventories uh and other properties that we own that we could potentially be a good fit. Uh we can put a comprehensive RFP together on the street and see what the responses are, and you know, we can pick and choose what we like, what we don't like. We can not like any of it, we can like all of it. We, you know, same same idea as what we did over at Granite Knolls uh in order for us to, you know, make sure that we're taking advantage of these opportunities.
Yeah, that's a perfect spot for those. For the canopies up there. Wide open space, you know, the carport canopies and so forth.
You know, but we have a number of parks that provide that kind of.
We do. It'd be interesting to see what what the responses are back. I mean, this is where, you know, we look for creative ideas from the experts, right? And so this uh would per- would allow us to uh engage in that opportunity and and see what we get back. And like I said, if we don't like any of them, then we say no. If we like four out of the ten maybe, then we go with four out of ten. I mean, that's that's the beauty of it. It's it's a bit of a menu. And um and we just see what, you know, there's no harm, no foul by putting it out.
I agree.
I agree.
Well, I I suggested this in twenty sixteen for the rooftops anyway. I think it's a phenomenal idea. Uh when we had that discussion back then, a lot of the companies actually would put a million or a two million dollar policy on the roof uh in order to do it. So that's what I have on my solar panels. You know, they they take care of the insurance on that, but that's a negotiation, of course. Uh but, yeah, it just makes sense to to get a little income off these buildings.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, that's that's, I mean, we, sometimes we have to practice what we preach too, and and let's start putting stuff on our buildings where we can put it.
I agree.
Far as uh, as far as solar, and this is first step.
Great. So Adam, you wanna look forward to the RFP, then work with Diana, and then we can take those steps forward.
Adam, that list is getting long for Friday.
Fridays, Friday's Friday, Friday's is Adam's day. All right, let's talk about another RFP. Uh I'm gonna share some photos that uh I got today. So up here, this is Sultana Pool.
Oh my god.
These were taken today.
It's all open like that?
Yes, ma'am, and Mr. Kopstein can, I think, verify that. Um, these are photos, like I said, taken just today. So we have an issue, this has been going around now for.
Thirty years.
Fifteen years?
Years.
Twenty years? Uh where we have this uh.
Yeah.
At this point, let's call it an abandoned property.
Yeah, they walked away from it.
Uh it's it's a significant quality of life issue. It's a significant safety issue, it's a significant liability issue.
And revenue.
And it's a very complicated issue. I think they need to be very transparent about this. Uh it, this is not gonna be an easy fix. Um but I think it's important for us to at least try to put an effort forward to see if we can come up with a way to make all of that uh much better. It's a great neighborhood over there, uh wonderful people, and unfortunately, they're dealing with uh that type of public blight is is just unacceptable. So uh Mr. Rodriguez and I went out on a site visit about two weeks ago now, uh trying to figure out how we can come up with a solution. Um, one of the things that we came up with and we spoke with some of the folks involved is uh is just putting out a simple RFP, just like we just talked about with the solar. And see if we had any bites. Again, no harm, no foul. It doesn't hurt us to put it uh put it out there. Um maybe someone can help with something creative. Again, I understand that there are easements that we need to figure out, that there's infrastructure issues that we need to figure out. Completely recognize and 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 acknowledge that. But maybe someone can make something work. And and the only way we can know that is. And and the only way we can know that is by giving someone an opportunity to come forward and say, here's my idea. What do you think? And we can make it as working with the neighborhood and the neighbors. Uh working collaboratively, we can hopefully come up with a a creative solution. But it's gone on too long. I I think that it's time that we uh try something and and maybe we get lucky. That's an interesting piece of property. Um it's basically got a stream that runs down the front of it on, is that Van Court, I think? Yeah. Um with a walkbridge. And then um it's basically a landlocked piece of property. Now, that then would become not our problem, as you and I discussed earlier, Matt. Um if somebody wanted to buy it, how they wanted to access that property. The question I have with this particular piece now, is there anybody holding any insurance on it? That we know of or is it all of the funk that's just?
You own it.
No, no, we don't. No, no, the LLC or the the cooperative that ran the pool. He's still the record, he's still the record owner, but they're a defunct entity. They don't, you know, they're not, they're not active. They don't pay taxes. I'm sure they don't have insurance on the pool, on the property.
I'm just gonna show this, so we have another view here, but this is the Google Maps version. Um here's Van Court here, Sultana here, here's the pool.
How big a property is it? Do you know?
Uh off, not off the top, uh half an acre, you have the sheet right there, right? Half an acre? Lot mu- larger than a half an acre? This is the, this is again, this is the property here. Uh.
So it's landlocked? It doesn't have a a way in?
Well, you can, you, in theory, and I understand, again, it's wet, but in theory, Van Court Circle.
Okay.
And and Mr. Kopstein, who lives over here, right? So when he is over, over here, where are, where are my, where are my mouses up there? Right. Right.
You have to have a bridge to go over it.
There, there is a footbridge there, Alice, but it's, it's uh. But my understanding is from Mr. Kopstein is that they were given permission to put a temporary bridge at one point. So there, there's, there's the, where the access would be. Um again, I think we all acknowledge the, the problems with the, it's not obviously perfect piece of property. I think we all recognize that, but. Uh it. Someone's gonna, I just, I completely agree. Uh you've got a completely full pool with chemicals in the, in the shed. Uh and and other, other things that are there. Um so it is a public nuisance and and someone is going to get hurt. Uh so. Our feeling is let's roll the dice and see if we can get a response on an RFP. Again, no harm in putting one out there. But at least we're giving it a shot and if someone can come up with something more, you know, something creative with what to do with that property and figure out a way to, you know, to build a single family home or whatever it might be. Uh it's, it's a vast improvement to what is there right now.
Okay, can I just say something?
Yes, Councilman Patel?
All right. Uh this is my thought, you know? Uh first of all, we can empty of the chlorine. It's, it's not a big thing, you know? And then go with the neighbor's permission, dug a hole in a pool, uh you know, it's a metal or something, then they can fill it in. And then let the neighbor wants to buy the land, give it to them for nothing or whatever, because it's, you can reduce the assessment. Because if it can be used for some, any purpose for the town or give it to them, whoever wanted. We don't have to pay the taxes, at least the school, you know, and county taxes, you know?
Yes.
Or that's, and then it will improve, maybe the, you can get a permission to do some work through the town to fill it in the pool. It's been filling up, dug a hole in in a couple of times places and then we can have the chlorine and like that. And neighbor who people I think sell, some people are interested, we should help them, right?
Well, and right now, there's about, I checked with the assessor, um the back taxes are about a hundred and sixty thousand uh all in. So town, school, county, et cetera. Um the, the issue was, my understanding is uh with filling the pool. Again, then, then the town is, is taking it and and it, you know, we're gonna be expending resources uh to fill it. Before we get to that point, I just think it's worth seeing if there's a a better proposal that someone may have. Um that, that would clear the taxes and and take it out of our hands. What's that, Councilman Diana? It it's, pardon me, in- interested parties sort of speak that may like to take over the, the property, maybe who knows, put a house up or something of that nature at that location. Yeah, that's, that's exactly right. I mean, you never know. I mean, you know, I, you know, we've had a couple of properties come through our way in the last eighteen months that were. S- you know, s- and I can think of one in particular, but it, it did, it was, I don't want to say it was similar, but it was a very challenging property, but they still got a way to put the ha- a single family house on it. So if we're saying that this is an opportunity, you just don't know what someone may be willing to do, so.
I think what's challenging for most people, for someone out there who's got an idea, it may not be challenging. And hopefully, we can find that one person.
Yeah.
Because obviously, at any point, we can deem it an attractive nuisance and do what we have to do, but. Give it to someone and let them do something good for the neighborhood. That would be wonderful.
Right. The um, um, none of the neighbors that surround that pool want to take that property.
It's a lot of money.
Just a, just a thought. It was, there was, it was a discussion in a previous administration, um but it was never executed.
Okay.
Right, because the town didn't want to foreclose on the property.
We could foreclose on the property. We should have foreclosed a long time ago. Would the neighborhood want it, Jay?
Jay? Here, hold on. Come on up, come on up. Let me sit over here. Not the pool so much with the property and.
Does the neighborhood want the property?
Mr. Kopstein is a neighbor.
What was discussed in the prior administration, several prior administrations ago. Was taking the adjoining property owners, first the town would take possession. And mitigate the pool.
Okay.
Then the property would be offered to the adjoining property owners. For a dollar, with the property then going on to the tax rolls as a fully assessed property.
Did the plan require the town to fill the pool?
Well, what, you don't have, the pool is a steel pool.
Right.
Right.
What you have to do is punch out, pump it out.
Yep.
Punch out the bottom.
Yep.
You don't have to take it all apart. You can fill it from there. The reason you can't just fill it is it'll become quicksand water, have no place to go. So you punch out the bottom and then you fill it. The uh, Mrs. Quas spoke to D E C about years ago with a class C stream. They had no objections to pumping it out and putting a temporary bridge over it. So that trucks wouldn't have to go into neighboring property, made it a letting the uh to fill.
Right.
Uh Todd Olowski checked the chlorine, about six barrels of chlorine. It, it hadn't yet dissipated in those barrels. That was the largest expense, getting somebody to come in and pump out the existing chlorine.
Right.
That didn't follow. Then we had a, well, the town had a deal with the Y in uh Mount Kisco. They were going to take over the pool and use it as part of a day camp. And because of the easements during off hours and weekends, the neighborhood was going to be able to use it. That was going to satisfy the easement.
That's not a bad, that was, that's a pretty good idea.
That's a pretty good idea, actually. I know it is.
That, that fell through, you have to ask um Mr. Grace what happened with that. I, I think the executive director changed and the new executive director didn't go in that direction.
Okay.
Now, when we looked at the pool last with Todd Olowski, the town couldn't take it over. It does not meet ADA requirements. Nor does it meet the requirements of the National Electric Code anymore.
Oh, okay.
So it would require a rehab for private to take it over. Nobody's going to insure it in its current condition.
Correct.
In fact, we paid the insurance for a year or two after we stopped using it, but the insurance company said. The longer you pay it, we'll continue it, but once the policy drops, that's it.
All right.
So that leaves us to, to where we are today. Uh. That's not a bad idea. I still think that, and and Mr. Kopstein, you know, feel free to chime in because you live right there, but the RFP, to see if something, we get a nibble, it doesn't hurt.
It, it doesn't cost anything to get an RFP, find out what they want to do. You may get something you want to do something with it.
Right.
You know, and if someone knows someone else who me, who what, would think they would like to do this kind of, have them go and uh get it from Diana, because I think this would be. There's somebody out there that can do something with this property.
Right. Well, hey.
And if it's a young family, a nice little young family. Um but if it's something like the Y wanting to work with it during the weekend and letting the neighbors use it on the weekend, that's even better.
Well, that was, that, yeah, that was something. Um is, is um, where's it going with this? The uh. The parking lot, that is all part of that property, the, that little parking lot there, uh Jay?
It's more than just a parking lot. It's that parking lot and then it goes north from there. Uh Mr. Rodriguez has got the maps.
Okay.
You know, if we finally get together, he'll be able to show you the maps. It's a sizable piece of property. This all came about because two building associations couldn't get a handshake on what to do. When he, when the houses on Van Cortland Bridge and then Sultana were built.
Okay.
So cu- the quick background, the builder on Sultana promised those houses they could sw- swim in the. Well, the swimming hole at the top of Van Cortland. That's now gonna be a, a butterfly park.
Mm-hmm.
The Association for Amawalk said, you can't do that, you don't own it, we do. So Hannah, Bill and Sultana said, all right, we'll bid you, build you a pool. Then the state stepped in and said, you can build a pool, but you can't put any water in it because there's no.
Oh my god.
So they had to lay a sewer line along the backyards on Ridge.
This is our first.
Van Cortland, which gave both houses in the sewer line access to the pool. Based on that, my particular house, I've got two easements that guarantee me rights to the property. Now, if somebody wanted to build a house there, even if the town foreclosed on the property. A new house can't connect to the sewer because the easement from the pool property to the sewer goes through my property.
Oh my god.
And it's an ea- it's an easy way to solve that. Uh it's called the property line adjustment, though.
Yeah.
Right, exactly.
It's, that's an easy solve if we can get somebody who wants to buy the property.
Right, that's the key. So I think, I think we're all in agreement. Let's try to roll out the RFP.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Other task for Friday, Adam over there and um.
You better bring him lunch.
Uh I will, don't worry. I'll bring him lunch, all right. Uh but are we all in a, is there any other issues or thoughts from the board on, on the RFP to see if we can get a nibble on this? I think it's a good idea. Uh it's, let's, you know, like you said, let's throw it up there, something that's gonna stick and maybe somebody has a real good idea. If they can put a temporary bridge up to, to, to span that area, even if it's just to fill it. Um at least it would make it a safe area. Right. You know?
So I know that uh, I know that Cindy Delfino had uh contacted me at one point about some childcare. Uh programs at the YMCA and White Plains.
Really?
Within the community, the different communities. So, you know, as, as stated before, maybe this is a nice idea, a pool, if they could find something where they could do some, like a summer program.
Yeah, yeah, she'd be great to maybe go to and partner with and see if she'd be interested. But I mean, i- i- it, just so you know, it, it, thank you, Diana, it's one point eight two acres is the lot size, so it is quite large. Yeah. Yeah, that's a good chunk lot. So, yeah, Ed, maybe the Councilman Lachman, maybe we, that's something that we can bring over to Cindy.
Right.
See if there's any interest in as well. But I do think, Adam, you know, drafting the RFP and working with the neighbors collaboratively to, to see, you know, what we can do. I think it's worth rolling it out and seeing what we get back.
It won't hurt.
Right. Nope. Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kopstein. Okay. Moving right along, we have resolutions. Take them together. We can take them all at once. We can take them by department. Well, why don't you take them by department? That's why it's easier. Yeah, but uh, from the comptroller's office, authorize the comptroller to pay Michael Miner for video work done on September eleventh memorial video titled Twenty Years. Authorize comptroller to pay Tom Cangela for camera work done on the September eleventh memorial video titled Twenty Years. Again, I, I wanna just take a moment and thank you, Councilman Roker, for leading that effort. It was fantastic.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Did a great job. Very, very good job.
Yes.
We also have from the comptroller to authorize the comptroller to process a budget transfer. Uh this is a transfer of twenty five thousand dollars from the water department meter line to the water department overtime line to cover the overtime expenses as necessary. We're also going to authorize the comptroller to process a, a budget transfer. Uh this is for the senior nutrition center, uh and it is uh transferring twenty one thousand seven hundred nine dollars. Uh so that they can purchase a steamer and convection oven. Uh this is on contract and the purchases will be reimbursed by a grant secured from Westchester County. So that's uh great work by our comptroller and by our senior nutrition staff. And our director, Norino Driscoll. We also have a resolution to authorize the comptroller to process a budget transfer. Uh this is transferring thirty thousand dollars. Uh so that we can continue to utilize the services of Thompson and Bender, who do a great job with the town's communication operation.
Yep.
We also have a resolution to authorize the comptroller to process a budget transfer. Uh and this is a budget transfer to pay for the LED streetlight conversion, nineteen thousand eight hundred and twenty six dollars and forty nine cents. That was completed by Nisei. Also to authorize the comptroller to refund Northern Westchester Joint Water Works in the amount of a hundred ninety dollars and forty five cents. Motion?
Oh, move.
Uh I'm sorry, Dave. Councilman Lachman had a question?
Two, two quick questions. Uh for the streetlight transfer, it, was there also money being uh uh granted or rebated back on that? Or is that?
It's the, it's the savings for using LED lights.
Right.
Yeah, it's a cost savings. Yeah, there, there was no, there was no grant associated with that, right? No, it was a, you know, it was our investment into the LED lights, but then the savings of the LED lights paid for the investment. For the, okay.
I didn't remember if there was anything. And how long of that thirty thousand uh contingency for Thompson Bender, how long is that uh, uh cover us through?
Rest of the year.
Yeah, the end of the year.
Uh so I think you guys had some motions and seconds already.
We have a motion.
Second.
And all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carry. From the engineering depart- department, this is a rel- a bond release request for subject property at thirty five eleven Buckhorn Street. Uh also a bond request, a bond release request for Yorktown Jazz LLC.
Listen.
Motion of second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carry. The planning department authorized Barton and Judas to review the mitigation plans for the par three golf course.
So move.
Second. All in, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh just one, one question on that. We, we uh, I'm sorry, the uh, uh, they're gonna go in there and do the environmental survey, Barton and Judas at this point to see. So the, so, you know, the applicant provided a mitigation plan. Okay. And this is so that the, our environmental consultant can review and verify the mitigation plan provided by the applicant. Okay, all right. Yep. Let's get that place moving. That's been, my god. Yep.
Yeah.
It's been almost as long as the Sultana Pool.
Yeah, yes.
All right, from the supervisor's office, we're gonna execute a lease agreement between the Albert uh A. Capellini Community Cultural Center. And Westchester Community Opportunity Program, or well, we're. and Westchester Community Opportunity Program. We're wel- we're very happy to welcome them back so they can bring back uh their West Cop program at the Capellini Center. Also to authorize the supervisor to sign an agreement with the SPCA, Westchester's provide a trap neuter and return program for feral cats. Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? From the Town Board, we're appointing Laura Trop as a member of the John Sehart Memorial Library.
You guys meet her?
Sorry?
When did we get that? When did that happen?
Uh I believe that this was done by the library board.
Okay, so she didn't come before the Town Board?
No, she didn't, no, she did not.
Okay, alright, okay.
We can hold it aside if you wanna bring her to the Town Board.
No, no, no.
She is uh, just as a point of information, she is replacing the outgoing library trustee, Michael Resco.
Okay.
Mr. Resco served for ten years in a voluntary capacity, attending monthly meetings and additional library events as needed. Uh he helped steer the library as one of five trustees for an entire decade, and the library appreciates his volunteerism and service to the community.
And we wanna thank him as well.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Let's see here, uh waive a rental fee in the amount of a hundred ninety five dollars for the use of the Albert A. Capellini Community Cultural Center gym by the Yorktown Chamber of Commerce for a jobs fair.
Motion.
Which will take place on September twenty second. We'll take them together.
Oh, okay.
We'll also waive the rental fee in the amount of three hundred and thirty one dollars for the use of the Albert A. Capellini Community Cultural Center gym by the American Red Clo- Red Cross for a blood drive to take place on Thursday, October fourteenth. We'll take a motion for all three?
Motion.
All in favor? Aye?
Man, I'm going to abstain from that vote only because I have a dual role with the board and the chamber in the job fair.
Okay.
So we have uh.
Well, you need to tell the clerk that.
Yeah, do it in writing.
And I will shoot you an email.
One abstention. Okay, uh from the Town Clerk. Notice is hereby given that sealed bids will be received by the Town Clerk uh until eleven AM on Monday, October fourth for the cleaning and cement motor lining of water mains along Shorey Road, Hanover Street, Front Street, and Underhill Avenue. Uh so we are moving the water relining program forward.
They go for that.
Excellent.
Yep, very excited about that. Our goal is to be able to get Shorebury Road done this year, then tackle the rest next year. And then lastly, uh well, it's not lastly, we also have a a motion, uh let's see here, to refer out and hold a public hearing uh October fifth, twenty twenty one, for.
What is three hundred dash eight, dash eighty one?
Yeah, this is for the large scale solar energy system and small scale solar energy system. Adam circulated these uh again, but they were also circulated. We discussed these in May. Uh the biggest thing is we're changing the twenty five uh solar and solar energy system that exceeds twenty five kilowatts. Uh and we're changing that to twenty, is that correct, Adam? We're doing twenty to, oh, other way, it's twenty to twenty five, so that we're in compliance with NYSERDA.
Okay, okay. Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
And then we do have some out of close regarding personnel. Resolve that Joseph Enitucci is hereby appointed to serve as a consultant in the Building Department at a rate of sixty dollars per hour, not to exceed sixteen hours per week. Give a motion, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We also have one, one from the, two from the Water Department. Be resolved that James Waterhouse is hereby appointed to the civil service title, Water Service Worker, Job Class Code zero six three six dash oh one from eligible list number sixty seven dash nine oh two within the Water Department effective September fifteenth, twenty twenty one, to be paid at the rate set forth in New Yorktown CSA salary schedule. A group ten step five, which is sixty six thousand three hundred and seventy nine dollars annually. Be further resolved that this appointment is subject to probationary period of no more than twelve weeks, commencing on the first date of appointment on September fifteenth, twenty twenty one. Motion? Second, all in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. And lastly, be resolved that Mark Bistro is hereby appointed to the civil service title Water Meter Reader, Job Class Code six, zero six two seven dash oh one from eligible list number sixty nine dash two sixteen within the Water Department, effective September fifteenth, twenty twenty one, to be paid at the rate set forth in New Yorktown CSA salary schedule, A group five step four, which is fifty two thousand seven hundred and eighty five dollars annually. Be further resolved that this appointment is subject to probationary period of no more than twelve weeks, commencing on the first date of appointment on September fifteenth, twenty twenty one.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. There's no other business for the board. We will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Good night, everyone.
Favor, aye? Have a good night.